Everyone here is in the back of the room? This is the microphone, so it's very, uh, very sensitive to the noise. But you can pay off thanks. Anytime it gets too loud, blow us know, or not quite, we'll get out. We have to wait until 6:30. Turn on everyone's radio. Hi John. You have about thirty seconds to review your performance. Normally the Sergeant of Arms sits up here, would you like to sit up here?
If you want me to, I will.
I just want you to be able to keep a good eye on the room, you know.
I can see you back here, but wherever you want me.
Just look at back at the door everyone, and make sure they're all sneaking into here. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called as ordered, Volkoff please. I'm present. Here. Here. Alright, we will have a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now rise to the collective reasons.
President-elect, we are the United States of America, and due to Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the Lord our Father, in the Lord our Jesus Christ, and in the Lord our God.
Alright, I just, I just think for the benefit of, of a lot of the interest about the truck stop, just want to mention tonight that we aren't going to be discussing the truck stop tonight, I know there was some confusion about that. There is a, um, some information in the back of our packet which outlines the city attorney's brief on the line extension, and also a letter from the engineering company, and there are some comments from the city manager in the dis- comment section, but if anyone's here to, to enter into the discussion, that the city commission isn't really going to discuss that issue tonight. But, we'd be grateful and welcome you to sit to the, uh, current meeting, we'll try to go through, uh, quickly in an efficient hour, and at the end if you want to bring up any concerns or thoughts regarding that particular issue, then the public comments section of our agenda at the end, you're certainly welcome to, and I think the commission would appreciate that as well. So I just want to mention that before we move on. And this should be on the agenda for the commission? That's correct, and we do have a scheduled, uh, time to, uh, discuss this item on the next agenda, which is October compression. That's correct? Okay. Alright, um, does everyone, does anyone have any concerns about any of the consent items tonight, is there anything that anyone wants to remove to, um, discuss, um, quickly? Just to keep the procedure, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to pull item B, so just have a couple of questions, and so if that's okay with the commission, can we get a motion for approval of consent items A, B, and C? Okay, thirty seconds. So a motion by Friedman, second by Rennington, Volkoff? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Board, motion passes. So, uh, action item B, if it, uh, if it was the commission, I just had a couple of questions on that, and, um, even though we have it in the consent items and it's fine to have it there, I'm wondering if we couldn't make sure that, um, that we follow the same fiscal note issues that we do with the regular resolutions that we, we approve, where we have, um, a budgeted line item, so that we know what line item and what portion of the budget these expenditures are applying from, we will also fairly well explain, uh, that it was approved and where the, um, excess funds are coming from? Well, I think that is the only thing I have to comment on that, is there any other discussions or any questions?
So four items, but greater than five thousand bucks?
No, uh, for me, uh, what it was is, when I look at this and I see those expenditures coming out of the budget, what I want to see is the line item, uh, reference of where it comes out of the budget, so that when we're going through the packet, we can pick it up a budget, do that one, and make sure that we are, um, sure that it is correct. So, okay. You're exactly right, uh, this item should have had just enough batch to it, even if it's no got any money on it. What makes you agree? Any other comments? What fund numbers come out of it?
Would come out of the, uh, we have fifty thousand dollars coming out of the, uh, disguise fund.
Uh, no, I don't think so. Any other questions? Can I give a motion, um, on consent item B? A motion by Rennington, second by Volkoff? Yes. 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 Motion passes. Tonight we have no proclamations, and we do have three scheduled public comments. Uh, the first on our agenda is Katie Weaver. Okay, when she comes back, we'll try to figure it out. Uh, Bill Campbell? Hey Bill. Come on up. You're on the, uh, scheduled public comments, so you don't necessarily need to sign in. So, okay? Yes, you're on the agenda for right now. Now go ahead and speak into the microphone, so everyone will agree, and you can give it out to the class. I'm, I'm Bill Campbell, so this is my, uh, I'm from the office of Mr. Smith. Um, I would, um, I'd like to bring to the attention of this gentleman, uh, people are quite aware of the great new restoration project that just finished. I feel, I think what a lot of people didn't know, really realize is that, that actually ties in to, um, a true restoration project that took place near the restoration street, up, up to End Street, almost twelve years ago. And I happen to be on that board, uh, not a board, uh, a meeting, you know, subcommittee, the mayor's own subcommittee, and was part of our whole process of getting, you know, funding and following through, taking what was the old dump, and, um, we saw it right on down to this, a great place with offices and magazines and, you know, the dogs and people. And, um, it, uh, also did a lot of work on restoration up West Street, up to End Street. And, and in the process of doing this, I think maybe about seventy thousand dollars of funding was spent on it, the EPA came up, you know, the EPA came up and did it for a whole week, and built door holes off throughout the dump to find out whether or not it was suitable to use to people. It was all kinds of various little branches of funding available, and the whole, everyone pitched in, traveling, and pitched in quite a good money. And, um, in the end, what it was, was, um, the people that really took it up was, uh, we got funding from, um, the, I think it's called, uh, Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance from the National Parks Service. And it was a big project, it was a guy that came down here, um, Gary Weiner, who not only helped design the restoration, but supervised it, worked along with some city equipment and the funding that we got, I think there was even some residential funding. Anyway, they, they took what was a swamp back there, all wrecked cars, stuff sticking out along the banks of West Street, and they, they rehabilitated it almost exactly in the same way as we saw the whole senior project building. It's singing, it's rocks, you can trail along it, it's a great place. Part of that whole restoration project was living with the beavers that have been happening there. And part of living with that was creating, um, allowing the beavers to be there, but because it's not a natural flowing creek, like beavers are used for, um, and because, you know, two or three times a year, they get water out of the dam, the question, the beavers, without some kind of management on their dam, will continually build up the dam as that water reaches their dam. So, if nothing is done, you know, you'll end up with a six or eight foot dam, which is kind of what we have now. And so what they did is, they basically got the dam to where it was, was great for the beavers, and they had a pipe, two pipes underneath it, and those pipes would allow water to run underneath the beaver dam without the beaver stinking method, the dam was being breached. So for four or five years, um, with a little bit of management, the dam, the beavers kept their dam at a, at a reasonable level, the area made a nice wetland, the, um, the creek had a wonderful walking trail along it, but over the years, that needed management, and, um, over the years, you know, just, whatever, I mean, it was kind of come behind the curve. And so now what's happened is, the beavers build up a dam that is far higher than the natural beaver, and that part of the creek was, and so if I went and talked to the engineers that were dealing with the fieldwork, said, well, it's great, but you realize that you're going to be hitting a huge swamp once you get, you know, once all this, once you open this, so that's the situation you have down there now, and you need to be able to work and live with the beavers. And so, I took the, um, initiative knowing that the city doesn't have funds to support whatever, um, I, I approached Ed, Ed said I should talk to Scott Orvis, Scott Orvis said I should talk to the Forest Service, uh, and, uh, the Forest Service recommended a beaver specialist named Eva Chadwick, who, uh, who applied, practiced with, uh, the Great Western Indian, says the water with the Forest Service, he talks to her, look at the galactic, really, really. To make a long story short, I got in touch with her, she happened to be a Roseman, said she could come down here, I decided I'd pay her just to work there. And so we got a, um, a report from her on what she should do, what we could do, um, to continue the main, maintain that beaver dam at the restoration project, which is a real problem. As a matter of fact, um, so she's written up a motion court, and, um, she was very impressed with the area, there were several people, like Ed said, several people out from, um, the city, uh, could put them up. Yeah, and, and I think we found that, that, you know, with proper management, and just getting back into it, that it would also help, um, the, keep the beavers maybe migrating up, if they're happy down there, they would migrate up, West Street can create a problem up in the area. So, um, the, the bottom line is, um, they knew what they call a flow type, um, they had the flow, uh, flow device, and the whole package to, to do a flow device, um, that can be managed quite easily with volunteers, it needs muscle, much less management than the older types, and you could, but, 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 but only be about twenty five hundred dollars. But for a complete, sort of, uh, a package of, uh, a quick study of the area, and a written policy on how the city may work with, with the beavers and cohabitate with, you know, you know, you close this with the beavers, and, you know, you get, you deal with going up West Street, the whole kind of thing we'd work on, use volunteers to help, would be about six thousand dollars. Um, and so, I'm, you know, I think that, and I, I did contact, uh, Barry from the Forest Service, who, uh, who is, it's still one of their prime projects, if you go and look at the Rivers and Trails Program for the National Park Service, on their webpage, you will see it for two thousand years, um, it's a long report, we did all this work with Rivers. And I mentioned to him, we've taken this, and he said, I did with any suggestions for idea about retaining, creating beaver pond elevation at a level that doesn't throw much of an electric challenge, and the same, it's the same guided art original work, any beaver dam control structure, we'll have a later life, and we may replace it from time to time. And so, relocating the trail to higher ground is an acceptable solution, but, you know, really, really good. So anyway, I'm just bringing this, um, to the, um, city council's, um, attention, because I think that we have a great place out there, used by a lot of people, and we're not trying to do anything new, we're just trying to manage, um, what was very important in the kind of this program, to have a way to have a restoration project here, and it ties right in with the computer, and so, and I have no, um, things with the, I think it was five or more. Alright, thank you, thank you. Want to ring off?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great job. Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, um, well, thank you very much, and, so, um, seems like at this point, Mr. Muse, that we would turn this over to you, for, um, for, you would probably want to get in on the agenda maybe for a discussion, I'd like to get some action on this?
Well, I share that, hey, get, first off, I think you can, it will happen.
Absolutely.
Any adjacencies?
Okay. Oh, put on the, kind of, line up, you have a chance to draw them, and you probably might not be able to. Although one thing to know is that there, there are funds available, I, I do know that the city council has missed some, there's some structure wetlands, and that, the wetlands are back there, from the, you know, it turns out that these, um, being that the great dollars, or engineers, got so much work for the Forest Service, that they're kind of providing for the real funding, and they're, and they're kind of actually helping get the funding, so, so, so. Well, that's great. No, thank you very much for all the hard work you did. Thank you for paying any way, and getting the report done, and, uh, thanks for the diligence and keeping up with this project, and, you know, this, you know, this takes, you know, people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stern, just to clarify then, so, Bill's going to work with the administration to see if they can further his proposal of rehabilitating the beaver?
Um, so, we're noting that Bill came to the Parks and Trails Committee, um, presented all this information and more, you know, really good presentation, um, and the Parks and Trails Committee voted unanimously to recommend that, to that committee, and hopefully provide consent to, uh, Bill go work with the administration to actually, um, solve the problem. And we discussed it, Parks and Trails Committee, that the problem is potentially one, is that the problem is potentially one of real estate, uh, it's an economic problem, potentially for Livingston that increased by the, the dam, was potentially lead to flooding on property, and so it's, uh, it's more than just what the beavers and question think, that's what the city has heard, of this area around it. And that, so, what did you say, five thousand, six thousand dollars for the whole project, with the street model, rehabilitation, uh, but also some sort of studies, yeah, they were putting up with some, living recommendations based on current experience, they, you know, that they're, um, and, and, you know, the name they say, you know, the beaver's front white area up here, is just, we, we, we did, and have a, we, 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 I think it was just the city, um, and outlined that how it deals with, with, with the beavers that are going to be coming along, you know, in that structure that was facing a blow from the, and having, and, 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 two thousand dollars, the whole project plus, and the study with recommendations, it's my, 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 my,
I suspect, um, if it is B, have the public works department, because then how is it possible to say, coming from our waters here, and, uh, and for some, and the damage, it's going to be pretty bad. I suspect, this is my guess, that we had to show after the, the beast, we, we, we got. It could be, it looks a lot like the sand, the river sand, but we, you know, it's not even our burden. It could be the, the, the tide, or something that it's actually that's going into already taken out, like, it's something to handle. And I just, I, I did get a call from Canada, and we got very different comments on this before. And it's, it's that man has been sort of sort of helping, and so, and so, I need to feel and say, if this system was, you had a beautiful problem. And if this is, at least this problem can never be, is this, because we have a water heater, we have a water to use system, and it can be very, very much. And so that, normally, maybe that is, I don't know. Then, what do I, I can make, what do I, as we have given such three grand, only five, ten, or thirty, twenty, five, sixty, seventy?
And another fifty dollars. But it can't be realized just so that he can, he can get the fifty cents.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Raybo was kind of providing some options, uh, with the best of it. And what that, what that is best actually said would give us, you know, the compensation best up there. What it's saying was, it's not physically wrong, um, in terms of physicality, it's minimal spending. Or I don't think it actually used the word, I think it did stealth.
No, it's just that.
Well, it didn't actually give us any.
I'll get that, someone's talking.
So it didn't actually give us any compensation. Um, however, two things I would say, uh, number one, if I can have some credos. So what's in that budget came, uh, in the bag, came directly from the water.
I don't know, like, my salary is there and it's super bad to buy.
So who cares what I bought?
Yeah, you clearly have something to do with that.
You know, what I'd like to do with Mr. Raybo's attempt is that he will take some of this, he will pay to have it, come into his debt. Um, and we're going to keep it back. Um, I, I answer you that, you took, you took a sample, correct, Jim?
Yeah.
Uh, you took a sample, you took it back to other words, um, the next thing that, exactly what's on it? Uh, C L, uh, calcium, lime, rust, removal, and some of the drugs. Were saying that it would not have. However, we understand that that's where everybody, in practice, does, um, and so we need to help to do this, because, uh, where some of the, uh, 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 act, uh, uh, you can see, um, yeah. Look at this.
And you can check, but it's kept you on.
Now, who has good stuff, so a little people use this thing, uh, that's fifty five, ninety, and they're using that, if you're talking about.
Yeah, the other system, I'm just stuck here.
So.
And where, we can, we can.
Well, those things are scheduled on, this depends what it does. And then, if, uh, if you, I live at the city, you know, uh, the same issue, um, I've been working with that back. It's, it's, it's the city manager. And, uh, where, every, every, I think what we need to do is, um, we still do, uh, in order to, uh, just, just to, uh, help out, because I mean, that way we have, um, that we can afford it.
So maybe the board members, we can have, you say, send us this, okay?
Okay, cool. But, okay, so that is issue on the program.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'd like to be able to, uh, keep what you're talking, Mr. Raybo. Uh, first, can I ask you to get from, uh, some desk in the room? I thought I wanted to ask if it was your spot or in my area? And then, uh, but it's only that this is a, um, final, and then I can just talk to him. So I said, I got the.
This public hearing is not for us. And for us, it is fifty-two. We have a motion for the commission on purpose, on fifty-two.
I know there was an jab word in between there, but twenty-five two.
We're set. So, second. So, motion by Prego, second by Redington. Mission discussion. Mr. Freed. Mr. Stern, second. Mr. Redington. Second. That's all. Yes. Yes. Four. Four. Motion passes. We have, uh... There are no ordinancees for tonight. Yep, we're going to all these things just covered in the public hearing. We have three resolutions. First resolution is resolution number forty-five oh-nine, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, and we intend to sell the Cook City Fire Department, to sell to the Cook City Fire Department in the covered home by the city buildings, for five thousand dollars. Mr. Freed.
Chair, this is a mission that has been put into place for, um, uh, some reason. Fire, she, they have, uh, fire department, evaluate the operation need, um, to take through the position, if we no longer could, um, ultimately have to, you know, keep it good and good for the community, for the public, for the government, and the government. And first question, think about that, and, uh, the right thing, what's the problem, all that's, uh, uh, to sort, uh, the balance of what you have to do to see that, uh, uh, maybe, uh, nutrition,
Mr. President. Mr. President, and the President. And I would like to ask you how much.
Yeah, yeah, that if we have cancellations, that if people can't make it, we're still going to follow the program now.
Okay.
And if we have cancellations, it doesn't happen at 3:00. Right?
Yes. So it is now set for October twenty-third at six thirty-five. And if I'm moving in this room, but that's going to be a three hours. Okay? So we are settled on that issue. Action on D, it's specifically denied, change order number five, in the amount of fifty-two thousand twenty-four dollars on the two thousand fifteen CFP project. The water block of Melting, the water storage tanks. Chairman, when you come back. This is an item of two thousand ten-four. So that guy, the area, then. There. We can also. Name streets, water, everything plus. Apple project is very good. That gives us this time. And the group is in the point of finding pain. Finding pain, there's finding pain.
I'm happy to say this is a high deal. Because that's why this, um, this, um, this actual work is how, how this code, um, primarily deals with, um, the art, um, black, um, side work. And very, very active. And the balance of, of these tests will be done with, um, any sort of, um, um. That person, um, who will try to, um, um, is it, that, um, if you know this, for the right reason. Some people are, or that, um, that, um, that, um, that. My, um, um, that's, yeah. That's, yeah.
Well, um. What do you do for the production, you started in the last mission, where we're going to find the key. And so. One, two, three. And, uh, if there are any questions, um, discussions, um, the question, um, I want to do. I'm going to go through that, um, 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 um. Discussion, discussion, discussions. We have knowledge from the, from, from, um, even, everything. The only thing I, I want to know just in general is, um, you've noticed on some of these projects, especially, um, um, especially in the CFP project, there's been a lot of unforeseen things going on. Do you, in the process of going through this, do you, the administration, public works, see any opportunity for, um, ordinary improvement? When identifying, seeing these types of new things, and like, come up, you know, up the front too? Is there, is there a radioactive scan, is there a, down, is there, is there a, is there a standard? You know, ops, or, 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 you know, that's, 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 you know, that's. But do you think that, that is, uh, given this, uh, uh, well, 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 that's, the next time you do this, you can do this, and you know, that, uh, this is, you know, you do. Do you think you have those ones about?
I keep, I keep going. Yeah. You guys, like, like, you know, just, that. I just, like, purpose, um, business. I'm just, I'm just trying to be, because we, 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 um, um, um.
It's a paper. Maybe in every place, you don't need a legislation for this. And, uh, so this work hasn't been done yet, is that correct? This is not, it's all this work has been done. This work has been done. Has been. Everybody got their rough to find it. That is. Your, so this work's done. Okay. So this is, uh, a request for human. So, um, so we're not condition. It's the voice on your phone. Thank you. One thing I thought. Uh, hey, if you're, um, if you're watching, probably a question. Actually, I'm actually, uh, um. Thank you. If my plea was second, I. I'm ready. Uh, so, uh, please do the special questions. Please do. This comes out of the new legislation. Correct? And after this, we'll all, I'm gonna study this, okay? Uh, wouldn't you mind, uh, if we know you can tell us, like, I.
So, and I, uh, I think that's great. You know, just like me, that's the information that's worked with. That. I think one of the priorities. And I think meanwhile, it was. How much steps people take, because it's very difficult. We started actually briefly, but then it's too long. Two weeks. Thank you for that. For us, we're talking about, we have a chance. Um, basically, we're working on some things again, like two years ago. Talking about, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're asking. Again, the next minute. By the twenty first year, we'll come back to the new year. Leave the work of all businesses. We will, and now, uh, introduce the financial information. Once that we can start to meet and discuss with the next meeting. What do the doors need to be considered going forward with? Uh, once we come to some ideas about that, and we're building points. Another step that we're going to take. Act as a force of the number. In order to recognize and have a better foundation. Very, uh, big. But, uh, finally, one thing I would add, uh, to that, to that, this. So, next week, uh, several, uh, wait, uh, and, uh, having, uh, no doubt, the traffic. And, uh, I keep saying, uh, tomorrow, uh, like, uh, see, uh, line up. So, uh, and, uh. The people, uh, kind of, uh, when we do, uh, any fair side. Actually, I mean, uh, we would hope. Who would think of the world, uh, being what we, uh, what we're trying to do. They're understanding, they're paying, uh, you know, for their, uh, uh. And, uh, certainly, that's what's driving that. There are even bits, that's just. If they were just, uh, you know, that, uh, M R L, you know, and everyone. M R L, uh, yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, pretty good. They're gonna, uh. You like them? Hey. You like them?
How do you contribute, uh, to these, uh, to, uh, to the public? Can you sit, um, tell me about, uh, the, uh, your, uh, please, that you understand the details?
Uh, you, we, but I've, uh, but we, uh, have a, uh, fifty, uh, seventy percent runoff. You know, based on, uh, our, uh, the railroad, uh. From that previous, uh, point. After the vault at the last, uh, you, you did a final plan. You know, let the railroad, you know, and during that time period, there, there the man, uh, near six, uh, maybe two, six, that happened. He really can't, uh, live it just, uh, that way. You're not gonna take it, you know, uh, uh. We have, uh, we, we, uh. We had, uh, that's where you, uh, you, uh, last night. Like, now, uh, it's, uh, uh, what we, uh, do.
These words, uh, maybe tell us, uh, uh, agents, uh, who, uh, who, uh, who, uh, that. They, uh, they, uh, right. They're gonna, uh, 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 be able to see the future. Yes, my dear.
Um, to do it, um, before we have to pick it up, uh, um. Uh, um, I mean, uh, more than, uh, uh, and to see that this contract, uh, uh, which we should have, which that's, um, the value to you, it's on ground. Over the side, because it's more visual strength of, of what we're, looking at, despite the price of, uh, the, uh, and, and, uh, what could be something like that? Uh, I was, uh, uh, uh. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know that one. But, uh, since I'm on happy to you, I mean, you know. You also, you actually want us to, 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 uh, 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 uh.
...the administration and the official policy of the administration. Other priorities that the committee's in luck with, we either thought they were that was just riddled away, I just thought that they were secondary importance. There were many of those priorities, we thought could be tackled on our own in the committee before sending to the commission and committee administration. So what we have here is not a complete list of the activities of the committee. These are the priorities that the committee wants the administration to do. And there is a section of the city manager's priorities being held for these. Did I say that right? Yeah. Commissioner O'Leary is also on Park and Trail Committee, he has very big to click on developing the committees. We have a bunch of really good committees on the committee, everybody's got some really good committees. I want to address the priorities real quick, so we're clear. And then hopefully we'll go to the committee on the administration. The very first one, develop the final plan for rehabilitation of the area unit civic center. The administration has done a good job. You remember the area unit civic center was all fenced in, it was filled with all the dirt and trees and boots from summer effects and all sorts of stuff. It was right in the middle of that park. Very valuable real estate was doing this, storage was spent stock. Do you guys know, three years ago, we need the administration to pull the fence down, pull, put all that stuff away and effectively open up that space for public use. We decided at that point not to just jump into fixing up that area. So we didn't exactly know what was worth the test weight in use of that space. And indeed, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different options, there's a lot of people with a lot of different ideas. And so that, I've been gone to the Park and Trail Committee and we have been working on that. We've been working on developing a plan for that area. In fact, tomorrow, tomorrow Wednesday at six thirty PM here, we've been working with an architecture professor from NYU, because of my computer. And he and his students have been surveying and doing work with that area and coming up with different possible plans for the area unit civic center and how whatever's there, no rehab or grant area or whatever, how that will fit in with the rest of the park. Division is that the park goes from the van cell all the way into the baseball. It's the farmer's market or what have you. There's a lot of possibilities. This priority has been on the list of the Park and Trail Committee for two years, for three years, and it's on this list if we want to continue working on it, we're working towards that. That's very valuable real estate that we want to continue to make effective. That's number one. Number two, continue development on Punch Street Trail from Fitz Street to Star Road along Punch Street. That is critical for connecting the trail system and redemption. That was also on the priority from last year. The administration has applied, had some really good plans for that trail, it's applied for grants, grants are not approved. Last year, according to the manager, they were also close to getting approval and to the highly encouraged to apply again before we want. That's a critical trail for a trail management committee on the event site. The third one is equally critical now that we have this new bridge, investigate pedestrian and bike connector trail along Park Street from South, South Village Street to the KPR Gate Bridge, which is now Veterans Bridge, along Park Street, along the south side of Park Street. Because there's a lot of people that travel that way, run or walk or whatever, from pedestrian and bike traffic, and it's quite unsafe. In addition, making that trail connector from basically the walkable part of the city to the bridge that has a pedestrian path on it. Making the walkable trail connector there will connect the pedestrian trails from the west side to the east side. And it will help a lot in the government of the east side of the city. But the... So number three there. No, we put the word investigate pedestrian and bike connector tracks on number three. And that's because with the new construction that they've done there, you can't just put in a trail there, you don't place it, have to go on the south side for that connection through the walk, it's not walking. And there's no place for a trail, it's just the slope. So in order to put a trail there, it's going to require some engineering, finding funding sources, there's some work to be done. So we put investigate there because we want the administration to investigate those possibilities for the requirements, see what can be done, how much it'll cost, limit the administration, best place to be there investigating. Once we know what's required, maybe the administration will find out that we can do the trails for a very low cost, and they can move forward. But I suspect that there'll be quite a bit of information that we need to obtain. And once we know what information, or once we have that information, we know what's required, we can decide how best to move forward. Number four, approve the recreation opportunities on the high ground there. That started out a year and a half ago as delineate the high ground. A lot of folks would use those trails up by the rest of the park in that high ground area, and it would unite those trails who are clearly marked with parking signs and that sort of thing. But when we started with this, when the public works department started on this, the direction was not clear. Sandy Wolf came up and said, it's terribly long in the demo club. It's all just open, it's unopened undeveloped land, it's not clear where the trails would go, it's not clear what landowner took these, there's accediment there from an old county road, there's some land that HRDC and other landowners have landed their property, there's Tony Chris, I love your landowners, I'm a decent man. So the Park and Trail Committee is a volunteer committee, committee made up of volunteers. And we were going to do some of this survey and identification of the land, but that proved to be out of our expertise. And so we thought it best to task the administration with those, with these items, and we did. Spent them pretty precisely. Identifying and surveying the old county road, that's an achievement, which obviously the planning board is best able to do, not the committee board, you have the planning department. Survey the land in the high ground area for the public side of these. A and B really should be done by our professional planning department. C for two acquisition of the AICRC DC billions, there's a lot of volunteers on the Park and Trail Committee that like to help with that, obviously something like that, actually go to the administration. And then the last one, we need a lot like C. You know, we can help out, we might show, we could talk to you, but that has to be what we need. Anyway, those high ground trails are a big asset to the community if you'd like to move forward on delineating them and making them as useful as possible for the community. The last aspect of community, the last one, trail maintenance and weed management. This one's a tribute, and we are, we must first make clear what we are not asking. We are not asking for this at this moment, for the administration people to go up and eradicate all the weeds all over the city, drop all the efforts for trail maintenance. This I gave about, it's from about two different, one is, there's a lot of folks in town who have contacted the Park and Trail Committee, they've contacted the county commissioner, and others, about weed mitigation and weed management in the city. Really not enough resources to sit in and tell me to that matter, take care of it. But obnoxious weeds are an issue. And the second one is trail maintenance, that we have trails, I'm sure we all get calls weekly about trails that aren't being maintained, there are trees that are planted on trails that have died from lack of watering or some such thing. And I'm not aware of any published weed management plan that is needed or any published trail maintenance plan by the city. Supporting the, so I think it's clear that the community needs a published trail maintenance plan and a public weed management program. That meets the needs as well as possible, given the limited resources of the community. Supporting that is the Park Trail, Livingston Park County Trail Plan that talks about, which has standard for trail maintenance, and has standards for weed management. And this was adopted by both the city commission and the county commission in two thousand and six. So this is official policy for both administrations. That being said, it's important to note that the city, I believe, the city does not have complete, enough resources at the moment, a totally comprehensive we're at. Except to do complete maintenance of all the trails and the weed management across the city. However, with, if we adopt this, priority number five, we'd at least like to get the administration moving forward on developing, if not the plans, at least what the plans would look like, what would the cost be, what would be the requirements, and then get those requirements in front of the commission so that the commission can start to make the best decisions. Yes, we wanted that if we want for the purpose, no, that's too much money and we're going to live with the situation as it is. But that would be better than having rumors, legends, and folk tales drive the issue. It would be better to know exactly how much it costs and what are the requirements in the relationship. That's the priorities here. And if you get any discussion, I'll make a motion, I knew that we adopted the priorities because we had a great priority for Park and Trail. And then specifically on number five, I'd like to hear if the administration thinks about people being developed. You know, it's a lot of like you effort on the kind of, you know, certainly that is a vague kind of like the things that we'd like to do, it's certainly be interesting to hear about what the administration thinks about number five. But I think that's pretty, and there's more needs than there are research. So give us your thoughts. Will you answer that, Kerry? Do you mind if I get some information? So you do have a motion, and a second. Um, please, please, you have a question, one hundred thirty seconds. As you were talking, you want to do it. Come on, you have to say it also.
Um, very good question, very good, um, definitely planned and all for that. Things within a beautiful amount of, you know, opportunities to offer, you know, the major part in the weed control may be beyond, but it's good that I identified the priorities and that would be important, that may be the first, that may be the first. Yeah, I think that, yeah, number four, five is probably a less problematic, I have to say, because, you know, something that people brought up and they build something, but we don't always have to. There would be a few interventions you always can have. That would be the first, the second, the third, the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, the eighth, the ninth, the tenth, the eleventh, the eighteenth, the nineteenth, the twenty, the twenty-one, the twenty-two, the twenty-three, the twenty-four, the twenty-five, the twenty-six, the twenty-seven, the twenty-eight, the twenty-nine, the thirty. So I think it's a good, good time to do that. Maybe we, we look at this, like, what can we do, we can, that's, that's, and after that, and after we rule out the certain things, and strike, you know, if you know, maybe that, to, to, so, both of my thoughts, you know, that's, we presented a function to talk, so we put down my thoughts to the administration. Because we've been having discussions before, I guess I'll put that thing to the plan around there, first step, is we want to develop some cost management. One of the reasons for the, is, another reason for wanting to, is, five, is, we have to be, because, of course. With being said, I think, uh, the law, and the law, and the, and the, what we are, because we have discussions about, um, if there's a need to publicly tent things, or, or, or something, but, that was a little bit, a little bit, uh, however, um, just to, to back, for, um, three years ago, in an effort to balance everybody, we just eliminated one full-time position in the seat within whom, um, the top school manager, and he started fairly much, and he's also not a mature person, which is a, 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 a Weed management itself, right, um, and there are some kind of programs, there's, that the community, and we now have a lead getting, so we're now starting by the first, we, that's the sign after paper license, there you go, that's the sign after paper license, first one, second one, for several years, is required, is required, and applying, and, and, and we are, we have to, I mean, I think we're, we're going to show you, and, of course, uh, for the union now, and, 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 we have to, uh, first.
What, to push my vote, uh, let's, let's, let's. I think that's our, is, 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 is,
... EB and H, CT with H. Those guys. Both guys begin, uh, start to work on the study. Uh, pull some, pull some, do some, work some box together and then start to have public meetings. So that's all the meetings that we're talking about. And by that, five, or six, or ten, and the entire public will be coming and weighing in on the idea. So that the public is really driving the... This just sounds more like a facilitator that can put some documents together rather than someone who's going to do it. And that the public is driving the portion of it, to my understanding. Understanding is correct. Is that how the commission is going to operate this? So is that not how you want to handle this?
I thought, it's two years. All of them, they go through here and there, that's how a big company. But when you get into a final charter, when you guys are separated from some accounting, something is overseen by someone they don't particularly trust. Then, frankly, okay, whatever, whatever you want to say, has not, has not had done.
Okay, hold on, okay. What, okay, you can...
I'm just saying, okay, whatever you say, baby, I'm basically your own people. Some of us are working hard, very hard right now, and we're trying to find a solution. We need to have an option off the board, you know? We are, we are way ahead of ourselves. That, obviously, we're unhappy and troubled, because we are, we are, we are worse to be together, like this. Why would we have so much overseeing of that? If we're, if we're, if we're, I'm asking, if we take them time for it, they're represented. We are, our own ambition to always make things better for the end. That's all I'm asking.
Uh, the problem is, with the only, only problem I see, Bishop, is that, uh, we do have to manage this by, think of, the URA, it's under the administration. And the funds that manages these sources are as well. And they're, I'm assuming that there's very stringent guidelines about how those funds are used.
But I can, I, I already said that.
I understand that if we don't have the funds to do this, are you, are you trying to say that you want the commission to consider the idea of not hiring an outside engineering firm to handle the process? Do you want the, the URA vision, Livingston, uh, five, over five there? Do you want them to now do this work?
They, they represent, they, they are capable, but in fact, once people become, over see us, and others are not, then it becomes, it's best, we need to take the technicality down. That is the first time, if I get in on it, this is actually the first thing we're working on together, because we're doing it in life. And you don't want us to go back to this old separate, the same time, what thirty years ago, it's a technical, having a... All I'm just saying is, please consider not visiting the person who's actually in the oversee business yet. Go ahead and approve it, but don't, don't dictate to us who's going to be, uh, to, to, to be overseen. Okay?
I'll listen to them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we, we send them. Yes, for anybody that's on board with your driving, with your board member, I'm, 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 is involving the private, taking board of trust. The spirit has, uh, been brought in this situation, because that's what, uh, what I've got, my, um, this is not what, fair, so we're, we're distributed as a board member. Also, we're, like, just going to, if anything goes wrong, that happens, and that being separate, that's on the side, it's just asking to do. Well, I'm explaining that to you. Okay, and thank you very much, Pat, Bishop, and Pardon. All right, so, um, with, you know, some of the questions, all right?
And nothing you can't do, you know? The way that the grant, living, the written, as, not share a management, as made, then as the accident, and after, so... To enact, you see, the article, and say, though, it's true, we're going to have to go back to the first time, and basically, and maybe, and, uh, process.
Well, personally, I don't see this as an visionary process. I see this as a visionary process, and, um, after what you've done, and, 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 as I mentioned before, like, is any, is any other public company, like this? If you have a motion, you have a mission discussion, you have a motivation, you have a public statement, and so, uh, it's, 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 you know? You want?
Yeah.
Four. What's your thought? All right. So, um... Okay, so what we have now is city manager comments.
There, so, um, I have to call to hear them, or I've heard three or four comments, and they have, uh, actually, uh, 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 we have one comment in there, and right, we have the theme, through the document, and we see, from the last travel shop, and more or less, you know, random, uh, uh, turning, starting up, um, and we're saying, we're talking about, we've got, we've got two, for, resolution, ten, for next year, um, first, uh, we determine your resolution at ten, and that would have, with it, a draft contract. The purpose of that would be to announce to the public that it's something that we're potentially going to take action on, and also to give the citizens, you know, the, the, what is the contract, to provide direction to the citizens, if you like this, if you don't like that, change this, do that, basically, uh, even if in the hour, if you want that to happen, if you want that to happen, uh, which is first, we want to, we need, we have to follow.
I was going to bring up the sidewalk safety that was with me today. Really, I mean, I think it's a very funny thing. And they had a big concern about the sidewalk safety and the access to the community. Because, um, it's very, so, um, yeah, someone could check it out, and it's great. Um, to address this here, please check if you what came on line and what would you do to help them before, and if it's not going to be constructed. Can you talk about this, or you have a idea to make?
So, I'm going to, two things worth mentioning, and first of all, I'm sure you know, it's a fairly compelling story.
I don't think I've got any more than that, but I think this is something that's going to last. And being there is going to have repercussions for many years and they should pay for it. Not only now, but usually they should pay their way. We should not be healthy and be successful at all costs. They should be successful. And that's about it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm Christian. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you for talking to me.
Now here as a private citizen, I'm not here to discuss the value of middle school elementary school. I've had a pretty strict experience back in the day in my 40s. And when that incident happened, I was all grateful for the experience. But we're not the way I found it, my opportunity, not a drop off or anything like that. The river on the left side that deals with traffic hitting north. And if the driver lets die in a car, he would keep us on that two sided turn. And thrown on ice and down, it's not a field. All dealers are running. We kept all the turning stops. And every cop will have one on the left side that's got that. So I guess the drivers driving down the street, we need to get these people out of the car. I could follow your mindset on the road from my left side. He's driving through that hill that we literally saw a few times. I was a smoker and we made a conversation about a school bus company last year. That's an activity in the town. And I kind of feel we always have to give something about it. And the problem is not for our entire people to come to this school. I was told for a reef or a park in the high school community. And all they tell me is, well, for a year at that private property. I couldn't possibly park around that school. So when I try to go forward with some things, you know, safety, students. I get the feeling that they're kicking off the top of my body. It's apparent, and I can tell you children for our younger people, I don't understand. So I'm just saying, I'd like to have near, you hear what I'm saying, just whoever needs children. There are some things that we do with children situations, as I have been with them. And I thank you for your comments. When an officer is parked down by a bus stop, you obviously mark change in traffic. It's a single thing, but I'm not there to debate that. So my suggestion is, you'll long for him down there five days, one week straight. If they're coming over there, and then randomly, maybe you get one day there. But a strategy like that, I don't think that's a good strategy.
I think that's pretty important. It's been discussed together on the orders for two years. So, uh, signs are important. Really important to have a student. Support for someone that has a pretty strict background. And whatever things that I did, or stayed on the program, or stayed prepared for work, or model actually. General knowledge, but I mean, it's not, thank you very much. It's easier to embrace this, it's less difficult. So once that question, um, now I'm not sure if you know this, but pardon my asking. Are those things you're personally aware of?
Uh, no, because I'm trying to keep this as a place to, to, to come from a standpoint of, like, I said, not as a thought. But if I approach him, I'm doing it at times. It's coming to me from, uh, through them, from you, you know, you call it. I'm not sure if you understand. Uh, the situation is very, very, uh, uh, there on school bus. And that's changed a lot. And it's taken a little bit. You try it.
Yeah, my new supervisor, I was like, no, no. Also, it's a bad to them too, but we're trying to, yeah, keep that faith in our culture.
No.
I want to learn this, this.
What is where?
Yeah, um, kinda, but we tend to feel personally, um, uh, as a term, we are now a little bit of a certified. We're standing.
This is more like communication based on.
And then it goes.
It's not like we're trying to change that. We like to, we like to put in the safe. I'm just trying to draw up what you're talking about. Well, when I'm talking to fathers, we need more collaboration. Uh, for a long course, every three weeks, we can, uh, in a traffic state, a long course. And that was, um, education. Pardon? Well, I may, well, that's one of the reasons why I didn't know that's true. But, uh, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to create an awareness that we need to have a more concerted effort on this. And I'm just one in the column, and to be honest, I just, uh, just follow up. I don't think it's supposed to, I feel to do that. And so I'm, uh, that's why I'm saying, I'm not very present in school business. I don't want to say anything negative that way, but it's just not well received. I'm hoping how this can affect them. But there's some things that you can use with the business. And I would appreciate, uh, more open mindedness from the law and social people. I'm tired of this topic. I'm trying to bad law, I'm trying to bad law, I'm trying to keep it objective, not make it messy. We want to help the people.
Oh, my, my, it seems like, you know, I'm hearing you say that at least he started on the street. And made some law enforcement question, is that, is that the truth, maybe, maybe you're saying that, like, the truth is not?
You know, and, and, yeah. Unfortunately, after this incident, traffic is so, I mean, I don't know. But, uh, what's, I'm trying to go right all this.
Yeah.
So we need to try to work these things down the road, so that it doesn't get back to what.
You call me? I understand that you're helping us, but I don't know. Um, I know that you're helping us, I would take it seriously. I'm completely, I'm quite confident that it's a couple nights, because we're teaching. And it's, 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 and it's, it's pretty interesting.